We were paused. Thank you, Stephen.
There was no public comment tonight. Nobody has approached me for a public comment. Items may be taken out of order and topics not anticipated far to eight hours in advance may be added. Item number one is the consideration of the FY23 year-end transfers. Deb Seifring, our finance director is here. Item number two is a consideration to go to bid for bond anticipation note for up to $3,157,719. That's Heidi Doyle-Town Treasurer. The Library Project, $1,900. Annual Town Meeting 22, Stormwater Compliance, $200,000. Annual Town Meeting 22, Roadway Management, for $500,000. Annual Town Meeting 22, Pine Hill School Floors, for $68,000. Annual Town Meeting 22, Woodhaven Windows, $130,000. A $100,000 earmark was received. Annual Town Meeting 21, DPW Pickup Truck, $109,719, which was on a separate van. An annual town meeting 23, roadway management, for $250,000. Item number three is consideration and a discussion on sending a letter to the Regional School Administration regarding a borrowing for HVAC as listed in the intermunicipal agreement. Item number four is consideration to recertify Robert Wolf as the town's rep on the Metro West Regional Transit Authority. Item number five is proposed 40B Coolidge Street Homes, consideration of requesting an extension on commons to mass housing. Item number six is Coolidge Street Traffic Safety Update Concerns from the Citizens. Chief Thomas Galvin will be here. Item number seven is the consent agenda, which is the payroll warrant, draft minutes of June 29th, '23. And our next meeting is scheduled for July 27th, '23. And item number eight is select board reports.
Excellent. Thank you, Diane. And I just let four people in the room. So do I have any suggested revisions to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda as read?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Paul?
Hi.
Marion? We'll take that as an "aye." You're muted. Stephen?
Aye.
And I am "aye" as well, so as far as you're on. As people noted, Eric Johnson is away, won't be available tonight. So we'll go to the first item on the agenda, which is the year-end transfers. There's four year-end transfers. Do you want to walk us through that, Deb?
I sure will. I just want to say that per UMass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B, by July 15th, all deficits in the operating budget need to be covered. The law states that the selectmen with a concurrence of the Finance Committee must approve the transfer. The advisory committee met last night and did approve the transfers. And so the following department deficits have been identified and can be covered by the balance in the reserve fund. And the deficits are legal or town council for $60,700... $60,800. The IT Department for $24,100. Town Buildings for $74,300. And Board of Health for $18,000, for a total of $177,200. We do have a balance in the reserve fund of $180,694, so we can make the transfer right from that account.
We do- Spent $3,500 on coffee afterwards.
Yes. Yes. We do have all the department heads from each of these departments here, if you have any questions for them.
No, I don't have any questions. Does anyone on the select board have any questions? Do you want to make a motion with respect to the year-end transfers?
I'll move that we approve the year-end transfers just listed by the finance director.
And is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I am "aye" as well. Thank you very much, Deb.
Well, thank you.
The next is Heidi here. There she is. And we have the two items for Heidi. Item two is the bid for bond anticipation note for the, whatever it is, six projects listed there. Do you want to walk us through it? I don't know if we need to go through each one, or do you, how do you want to handle it?
No. So last year, we approved five out of the six, and we had a $2.898 million bond ban that was issued, a bond anticipation note. So we're renewing all those items with differences. We're reducing the Woodhaven Windows. We initially had $230,000, but we did get earmarked for $100,000, so that went down. Now only $100,000 is being rolled over. The pickup truck had been on a separate van that is being rolled into this. And then we're adding this year's roadway management of $250,000, because we'll need that right away. So I'm trying to time in items when we need them. So the total amount is the 3, 1, 5, 7, 7, 1, 9. The other ATM 23 items, I don't think we need right away. We're going to discuss the school roof. And I have a December issuance coming up, that we'll see more coming. So the goal is that I take this one in August, the one in December, we're going to time them for next August to go for a long-term bond, which would be $4.295,319 million, unless there are any new items from next year to add.
Yep. Any questions or discussion items from the select board? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Well, we're not approving the award of anything. We're just authorized to go out to bid.
Yes.
Right.
But I moved to approve going out to bid for bond anticipation note for $3,157,719, as outlined by the Treasurer of the Town.
Is there a second?
I'd second.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I am "aye" as well. And we separated the, Heidi's going to explain, we separated the borrowing for the regional school, and she'll explain why.
Okay. So one of the things that came up was the school roof. They moved the payment. They initially had, were anticipating July, what we weren't realizing-
It's not the roof. It's HVAC.
It's HVAC. HVAC. Thank you. Sorry. Yeah, HVAC. We just did the roof last year. It's the HVAC system. When they said July, I was anticipating they were going to be working on it this July, but they're not going to be doing it till next July. So the intermunicipal agreement was written up that the payment was due in November. And I didn't see the agreement till after it was signed. And as I was sitting preparing this ban, I'm like, why are we going to pay the full amount in November if they're not starting it till next July? Because interest rates right now are high. That money in the bank on over half a million dollars is about $2,000 a month. So that's about $14,000 a month that I felt the town could have versus the school sitting on that money. But when I tried to talk to the school to see what their timing was and why we're saying November, they said they need to put a deposit down, and this is the way the IMA was written. The IMA can be amended. There is a section seven on the IMA that can be amended, and we could change the terms if that was something that select board was interested. However, it would involve the town of Dover, as well as a regional school committee vote to amend the terms to make maybe only the down payment due in November and the next amount due and closer to the time when they were actually going to do the work. Because we'd be paying right now on the borrowing for that when they wouldn't be doing the work, and we're losing the interest that we would have had. I did talk to Dover, but they're going to be paying free cash, so it's not much of an issue for them. They are going to kind of lose the interest on, they could have held the money, but they're not going to be borrowing and paying interest on it like we are. So they didn't seem overly interested in saying, yes, we want to make this change too. So I'm just bringing it up to the select board, because it is up to you to decide if this is of interest to write a letter asking if we can amend the terms. And if not, I think what we need to do is going forward to know, to ask more about their timing on projects. Because when interest was really cheap, it wasn't as much of a deal.
Yeah. So I want to get Paul's input here in a minute, but let me ask a clarifying question. So the IMA you're talking about isn't sort of the baseline IMA. Is there an agreement we sign for each capital item?
No. So only when we agree to borrow to split where there's a regional one. So it is, and this is only one item. And since I've been here, there were two others, and it just happened to be, payment was due in July, but they were working on the things over the summer.
Yeah, but my question is, it's not sort of the base intermunicipal agreement for the regional schools. It's just with respect to this one capital expenditure.
Correct.
Right. So we have an agreement that we sign. Every time there's a capital expenditure or several in a fiscal year, we create an IMA document that-
If we want to borrow, if we're going to do different funding?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So Paul, the issue here is we don't feel like we need to borrow money now, where they don't need the money till possibly as late as next summer. Maybe a little bit of it if they have to make an initial deposit on the design firm in November. What's your thinking on this?
It's worth trying, because it saves us some money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't need to amend it if we're going to make the payment now. So we did a few months ago, sign an IMA for this project.
Yes.
It's just the timing is off now that we know what the actual timing is.
Right.
So if they don't agree, we still have an IMA. We still fund it our way.
Yes.
This would just save us the interest at $2,000 a month. It's worth saving the taxpayers some money.
Yeah. So what we're thinking of doing is, because we wouldn't need to borrow now anyway, we would have to borrow in November. If we decide to follow this together, we'd have to borrow and give them the, the total amount this year is $552,000. We'd have to give them $552,000 in November. So what I thought we could do, and then Marion, I'll recognize your question, is just write a note asking for them to provide us with their capital expenditure plan. Because they may need to spend some money in November. I don't know if they have to put some money down if they sign a contract with the vendor, but probably they can only really work, it's the rooftop air handling units. Only work on it a year from now, next summer, when they're not in session again. So I think our plan was to issue a letter and say, can you give us the timing of your cash flow associated with this project, so we can adjust our bonding accordingly?
Well, we can't, that's not going to help us with, we have to make the full payment, because it's a contract. We're bound by this contract paying them $552,000. So it's unless they're willing to amend the terms of it.
Right. But if we know their cash flow status, we could make the terms consistent with that, is what I'm thinking. So Marion had her hand up first, then Stephen.
Yeah, it was just a related question. How much is required for a down payment? And can we afford to do that without borrowing?
Yes, we can afford to do without borrowing. So right now, because we've gone on to quarterly taxes, we're actually have the luxury that the bulk of one quarter is going to be coming in in November. So my next borrowing is not till December, so I'm not going to do a separate standalone borrowing for this. I'm going to actually put it with the December borrowing. And one month, we can float the $550,000, that $2,000. But the down payment, when I did try to ask how much it might be, they said they weren't finished with the design yet, because they are now switching to do more electrical components. So we don't have an answer to what they need.
Okay.
Stephen's, Dan's here too, but Stephen's got a lot of advisory experience with Dover Ward also, so.
Yeah, my question actually was also, do we know what the amount of the down payment is? And then just mechanistically, if we did want to amend it, do we, is it required to have Dover sign off on the amendment? Yeah.
And the school committee. So, yeah. Right. So we have a little bit of time before the payment is due, but I don't know when their timing meetings are. And Dover kind of indicated to me they had a lot of things going on. This was not going to be a priority for them.
Yeah. And so essentially, what we would be, what we will be trying to propose is that once they know what the amount of the down payment is, essentially just say, all right, let us only pay you that amount in November, and then we'll pay you the full amount when you need it later. That's essentially-
Well, exactly. The remainder, you know, and it would benefit Dover as well. I just don't know if they wanted to be the first ones presenting this.
Right. Right. Okay.
So we'll draft a letter, Heidi and I will, and maybe with Jeremy's help. And I think we're really asking for the timing of the cash flow associated with the project. And then we could match our borrowing to when, my word was a down payment. I don't think that was the word they used. But you know, when are they anticipating the cash flow needs for this project? So that's the plan. Does that seem a proper way to go, Paul? Is that, you think that's a-
Yeah. Let me emphasize that we have an agreement.
Yes.
The project's not in jeopardy, and anybody, any resident listening to this should rest assured that work is going to get done. The question only is, can we save some interest money by deferring our need to borrow and just be holding the money until, somebody's going to be holding the money until it's needed? And might as well benefit the taxpayers.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not a big deal. And if they say no, it doesn't mean the project is in trouble.
Right.
Right. I just felt it was my job as treasurer to bring it up to you.
Anything to save money, I'm supportive, so.
Sorry.
Dan, you go to be our negotiator here?
I was just going to kind of emphasize one point that Heidi made, which is that now that we're in this high-interest rate environment, these kinds of timing issues matter in a way that they just didn't two, three, four years ago, when interest rates were so low and timing really didn't matter, because nobody was going to make any money from the interest anyways. But now, in this environment, seems like something for, you know, advisory and all of us to just focus on a bit more.
You know, that's a good point, although this is also unique too, because normally they would have been doing it this summer, and I think-
Yeah, no, of course, of course.
They're sort of realizing, I think, maybe, you know, it's hard to find contractors, and they're sort of rethinking the scope with a lot of the energy conservation thing. So I think that they also didn't anticipate delaying, I think, so.
If I remember correctly though, maybe it wasn't this, but there was something that we approved at a town meeting for the schools, where they said they weren't actually planning on doing the project until next summer, but they just needed the approval now first. Was that this, or was that something else?
I don't know.
It was probably this, but like I said, I didn't see the agreement till after it was signed to start looking at, wait a minute, says the payment's due here.
I think it was this project.
Yeah.
Sean, you going to set us straight?
It was this. They're timing the HVAC with the roof, and they were told that the lead times on the HVAC equipment was 14 months.
Yep.
They needed to be a year ahead of the roof with the HVAC. And then what pushed them out even further was they were told or instructed to try to go all-electric, which I don't know is ever going to work, but it added a huge complexity to the project.
Yep, yep.
And may or may not work, but it probably made that 14 months, 24 months.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. So do I have a motion to draft a letter to the Regional School Committee regarding the cash flow, timing, and borrowing for this HVAC project?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I am "aye" as well, and Heidi, you and I could work on this.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, guys. Next item on the agenda is recertifying Rob Wolf as the town's representative to Metro West Regional Transit Authority. As you know, Rob's also on the planning board. So do I have a motion to re-
So both.
Is there a second?
Second.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I am "aye" as well. The next one's a pretty much no-brainer too. We typically do this on these 40B projects. We're just asking for a 30-day extension on the initial response from the town. We're only having, this is the one that we have at 9:00 AM tomorrow, tour of 108 Coolidge tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. So we're asking for a 30-day extension. I think that we normally would be due around the end of July, and we're asking for a 30-day extension.
Can I make a motion to request an extension on Thomas the Mass Housing by 30 days?
Yep. Is there a second?
Yes, second. And the letter that you wrote is another masterpiece, so.
Yeah, I've already signed the letter. I kind of was a little, I kind of got a little ahead of ourselves here, but the letter's drafted, and I signed it on Wednesday, I think. So we'll vote now. Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I am "aye" as well. And next up is the Cooley's traffic safety issue. What happened here is we, I received an email from a resident on Cooley Street, but it was, then there was an attachment with the names of, I don't remember how many, six or eight other residents that have been concerned about, you know, increased traffic and people not necessarily observing, you know, the speed limit on Cooley Street, and just a dangerous condition for, you know, the residents of Cooley Street. So what we did is the Public Safety Committee is going to meet and discuss this next week, but I wanted to get ahead of the curve. So I wrote back to the resident, 12, oh, Jen Hawke is just correct, to be 12 residents. I wrote back to the residents right away as soon as I got the letter. Then we held a meeting that Jeremy coordinated last week with the DPW Director, the Police Chief, Sean, and a couple other people. And so we came up with probably about a half a dozen ideas of near-term and medium-term actions that we can discuss. And then the full Public Safety Committee is going to meet next week also. And the meeting's going to be at 4:00 PM next Tuesday, which is the 18th of July. And it's an in-person only meeting at the police station. So Jen, if you and others are available, that's what we're going to do. But tonight, Tom, who provided a lot of the input, Chief Galvin, is going to describe what our initial working group came up with last week for some initial steps.
Yeah. I believe, Jeff, I think the meeting's at 4:30. I'll double-check that, though. I believe it's, I thought it was 4:30 that he reserved the room for, but I'll double-check.
Okay.
But yeah, we talked, we talked about a lot of things. Obviously, we weren't going to solve everything in an hour-long meeting. But one of the things that we wanted to do and we knew we needed to do immediately was to gather some data. We're fortunate that we, the Highway Department has a data collection box, and we also have a portable speed sign that you can turn off the display and use it for data collection. So we've actually deployed both of those already. That was kind of the first step for us to try to gather some data, get some speeds. You know, we know there's been some, over a 20-year period, there's been a lot of crashes. There's been a lot of serious crashes, especially in the last couple of years, late at night. So we're going to gather that data, see what the speed trends and the vehicle counts show us. The other thing that just, that happened this week as part of the the normal roadway management for the Highway Department, they started their vegetation cleaning, so that'll improve some of the sightlines and help some of the things there. We've also, and just completed, and I'll have that to deliver to Sean, was we did the entire town, we have a lot of roads with statutory speed limits. And so I had an officer that went around and determined where signs are missing and maybe missing, and there are some signs on Coolidge. So I'm going to get that list to Sean to try and look at that and try and get some of those signs replaced. And then we're going to move forward with traffic safety. You know, that's all the short-term stuff. We'll see what happens and what ideas come out of traffic safety. But then kind of in, you know, in the longer term, one thing that Jeremy suggested was trying to use some mass dot funding for a roadway safety audit, so we'll begin to look into that. Maybe similar to the speed feedback signs that are on Elliott and North Main, add some permanent speed signs, and these are all things that we'll also discuss at Public Safety. You know, and then the advisory signs and some of the curb signs are over there already on the road, maybe replace some of those. One thing, and this is something that people may have noticed already, when North Main was chip-sealed last year, narrowing the travel lanes and giving the appearance of a narrower road. And, you know, so we'll see that that's a possibility, that we could paint the fog lines a little further out from the edge of the road and narrow the lanes, you know, from 12 feet to maybe a 10-foot lane. And that tends to slow traffic down, because giving that appearance of a narrower roadway. And then at town meeting this year, we passed 9017C, where we can potentially change some of the speed limits. That may be something to look into as a potential for that roadway. And then some really far-off things that we talked about is, you know, potentially sidewalks. That might be something very, very difficult to do. But also even that Kendall-Coolidge speed intersections and making some changes there, and whether it be a roundabout or something, something really, really long-term. You know, this is something that we really need to look at with the 40B projects and the potential apartments that could be coming there. So we also want to research some of that existing traffic studies that those groups have done and really evaluate where those driveway locations are going to be with the planning for these projects. So we're, we'll have a discussion next week at traffic safety and see where that takes us. Or I'm sorry, I keep saying traffic safety, but it's Public Safety. And that was another discussion we've had about, traffic safety has kind of become a defunct committee, that we roll traffic safety and public safety into one committee, as safety, traffic safety is a public safety issue.
Yep. And we'll let, we'll let the select board speak first, but then we'll let anyone that wants to speak, we have a chance to speak. So, and I did, you saw in the chat, it is confirmed, Jackie confirmed it's 4:00 PM next Tuesday. Now, Sean, did you want to add anything before the select board? I did see your brush guys out there actually this afternoon when I drove out there.
No, he pretty much summed it up. We did add a couple of the signs that had been knocked down in accidents. So I think we have actually addressed that. I'm not sure. I haven't seen the list from him, from the chief, but there was a 40-mile-an-hour zone sign and a 20 that we're both missing. Those are up. And we're actively brush clearing. A year like this, we're doing that constantly. Every day, we're brush clearing somewhere on the side of the road.
All right. Thank you. So let's go to the select board next. Paul?
So I had two ideas. Some of the complaints indicate that cars were careening off the road and going onto private property. So many of the parents felt they couldn't let their kids play in the front yards, because it was at risk of being hit by a car. And we've seen a year or two ago, in another location, a family, a guy that was killed in his front yard in Sherburne. So one thought was to install guardrails along places where there's been a demonstrated effect of cars going off the road, particularly where these curbs are. Why can't we place a guardrail or two to protect those front yards and protect those homes? It wasn't on the list, so I wanted to suggest that. The other thought I had is that the materials provided indicate that it was the S-curve on Coolidge Street that was causing, or believed to be causing, some of the problems. And in driving, the S-curves aren't really that that dramatic. They're not like switchback curbs when you're climbing a mountain or driving your car in the Rockies. But it's, there still is curves there. What can we do about just straightening the road within the existing right-of-way? Trying to make it a little straighter, particularly in the areas where there have been these episodes of cars careening off the road. So two ideas that I wanted to add to the mix of things that is on the list.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Stephen, I think you are next.
Thanks. Chief, was there any discussion about enforcement of the speed limit on that road? I mean, I know that, you know, on my commute, there are certain locations where very commonly I'll see, you know, police officers that are kind of stationed, and I think a lot of commuters know those areas, and it definitely slows down traffic. I mean, it's obviously strategic where the police officers are, you know, are waiting. So I don't know that I've ever seen a Sherburne police officer on Coolidge. Um, so I don't know that I've ever seen a Sherburne police officer on Coolidge, um, sort of slowing down traffic. Um, and I think that if that became a semi-regular occurrence, a lot of the people that drive on Coolidge would, would probably slow down when they know that, um, there's, uh, potentially a police officer there waiting for them.
Yeah, and I mean, they're, they're on Coolidge every day. Um, so that is one thing that, that we obviously consider and consider with, with every type of, uh, issue on, on these roads. Um, you know, the majority of enforcement we do throughout town is actually moving. You know, moving radars are most effective way of, of doing that. So, I mean, it is something there. And, uh, and it's something we can look at if there's some additional spots that we can maybe set up. Um, but that is, it's always a consideration and that's, we just didn't list it as a, a formal thing, but that's something we always talk about.
Okay, uh, Marion.
Oh, uh, just an observation. Uh, if one is going, uh, from North Main Street toward Framingham on Coolidge towards Spine Street, at first it's quite a long straightaway. And people, uh, I, I've, I've driven that all the time because I live just up the road on Prospect Street. And I've actually been hit on Coolidge Street by somebody rear ending me who just thought it was, you know, a good fast place to go fast and didn't bother to stop. But, uh, my, my sense is that, um, first of all, I don't think straightening the street is an option for us unfortunately because of the topography. But, uh, I'm afraid straightening the street might make things worse. Uh, because people, uh, take off from North Main, they think they're home free. It's kind of straight. They know they're almost to Framingham or to Spine Street and they'd speed up. So, once they hit the S curves, they've already speeded beyond where they should be in the other direction. My sense is, is not that much of a problem. So the curves actually slow people down, but a little bit too late for some of them because they've already run off the road. Uh, so I think the crucial place, one of the crucial places to try to put controls is right at the beginning of that straightaway. Or somewhere along that, uh, stretch, just a comment.
Yeah, they've got, they've got, and also this data collection that they're launched already is going to, uh, guide some of that too. So they're already, um, working on that. Are there any more Select Board comments? Or I'm just taking people in the order which I saw them. So Steven Constantine, you were the first, I think.
Sure, Steven Constantine, uh, thirty-two North Main Street. Um, so, so Matt actually asked me to, uh, join this call. Um, the chief read a lot of, uh, a bunch of items that he said could be done in the short term. One thing that could be done in the short term, uh, has to do with, uh, the jake brake engine compression prohibition. Uh, folks probably remember over two years ago, that was passed at the, uh, the town meeting. Overwhelmingly, it was at eighty-three percent passed. So a lot of folks wanted to see this, uh, take place. Um, I've been waiting, a lot of folks have been waiting for the signs to go up. Uh, I spoke to Sean last summer. He said he was having signs made up. Um, nothing went up in the fall and nothing went up over the winter. Uh, in May, I stopped by the, uh, the DPW on Butler Street and sure enough, there was a sign and I saw one. Um, but I can't get, and, and again, I'm not trying to give Sean a hard time or put him on the spot. I know he's a busy guy. Um, but I, I, I need a plan. I need a plan. I need timing. I want to know when this is going to happen. Um, and Chief, if you're not familiar with this, I'd love to sit down with you and I can kind of walk you through, uh, what happened at the town meeting and what's being proposed. We, we did a lot of work on this immediately after, uh, the town meeting, I got together with folks like Matt, uh, Carol and Gary, a bunch of other folks. We put together an example of a sign. We mapped out where we thought the signs should be. Nothing's been done. Um, so yeah, I just want to add that. I'll plan on attending the, uh, the meeting on Tuesday, uh, to bring this up there as well. Uh, but yeah, let's add that to the list. I think the chief came up with a good list. I think this is an important one as well. It's a long time coming.
Thank you, Steven. Uh, Matt?
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, and thanks, Steven, for, for adding that. Um, just wanted to say I appreciate the initial list of ideas and I definitely are.
Oh, I think he froze on us.
Some brushes been cleared and some signs have gone up. Uh, I'll second Steven's comments of the jake brakes, less of a, less of a safety issue, but, but certainly a traffic nuisance issue along this street seems to have gotten worse over time. I think the one key thing I want to add is that, well, I appreciate the signs going back up. If anything, anecdotally, I've noticed it's harder to get out of my driveway now that there's a forty mile an hour sign, uh, in front of my house. Uh, people have gone back to turning the corner and flooring it. Uh, when the sign wasn't there, it actually, traffic was a little bit slower. Um, and so, you know, I know we were waiting on sort of passing that, that article last, last spring, but hopefully now we have some flexibility. And, and I think, you know, limiting that limit right, or lowering that limit right at the beginning of Coolidge may, may make a, a big difference because it does feel like, uh, it does feel like that's where people are, are really accelerating and, uh, and getting going down the street.
Thanks. Yeah, that, that definitely was an issue that they brought up. Uh, Jen?
Hi, um, first I want to say I also appreciate the, um, thinking that's gone into the project so far. Sounds like there's some good ideas being floated, especially collecting data to inform future decisions. Um, I like the idea of narrowing the street from twelve feet down to ten. Seems like that might leave room for a bike lane, which will be a lot cheaper than a sidewalk. Um, so that seems like a really good idea. I'd like to see that come to fruition. I like the idea of, of changing the speed limits and reducing them. And, um, the police are invited to sit in my driveway. I have two entrances. Anytime they'd like to, uh, to see the speeds coming around that S curve, feel free. I'll give you coffee and donuts. I hear you guys like those things. Um, and, um, I won't be home, um, tomorrow. Is that when you're going to one oh eight Coolidge Street?
Nine AM. That's for the forty B project.
Oh, I understand, but I just wanted to say I won't be home, but you're welcome to sit on my front porch at ninety-five Coolidge Street. There will not be coffee donuts because I will not be there, but you're welcome to sit there and spend maybe fifteen or twenty minutes to see what it's like, uh, what the speed is like as people fly out of that S curve and, uh, et cetera. So thank you for letting me have, um, a little bit of time and I appreciate the efforts that are underway so far.
Thanks, Jen. All right, I don't know which of the Burton family is going to speak.
Um, hi, we, uh, we're at number fourteen. So we're the, uh, house on the westbound side after the Bevers. And, uh, I have to agree with what Matt has just said. I did notice, um, that cars were coming much faster. Um, and I noticed that before I saw that the forty mile an hour sign that got destroyed in an, in an accident where a car, you know, came around, lost control and took the sign out. That sign was gone for weeks and the traffic was noticeably calmer. Um, personally, um, we would invite you to come to fourteen Coolidge Street when you're going to be right down the street and just spend five minutes, spend five minutes at the end of our driveway and see the speed that the cars come past. Um, because people come around and they see that forty mile an hour limit, they see that forty sign and it's Grand Prix time. They are off to the races. So the Bevers know that, you know, these cars are gunning it by them. They're gunning it by us. And that is why you're getting those accidents, you know, sometimes before they even get to the S curves. Because this road cannot support a forty mile an hour speed limit. Um, another thing that I'd like to add is that I have, um, when coming from the transfer station, you know, the town dump, I've come down Main Street and I've turned right onto Coolidge in our minivan, which I use for the dump runs. And I have been overtaken, okay, by a car on the wrong, going on the wrong side of the road because I was only carrying thirty miles an hour around that corner. And because, you know, I did not gun it as soon as I got onto Coolidge, they gunned it and passed me on the wrong side of the road. Thank God, nobody was coming, okay? And that is not the only sign because when we pull into our driveway, we've had the same thing. Cars do not follow behind us. They will go on the wrong side of the road to go round us. Okay? I don't know if you, if you, if you could really understand it without being here. That's why I would invite you just to spend, you know, five minutes at a busy time of the day. Um, it is just unreal that, that, the traffic madness that is going on here. And it's really no surprise to us having lived here for fifteen years as to why the accident numbers are the highest in Sherburne per mile of road for, for this, for this street, for Coolidge Street. That's, that's really it. I mean, it can't, it can't possibly sustainably be a forty mile an hour limit. And, you know, if, if you're worried about the budget, town budgets and saving money and being, you know, fiscally responsible, what on earth is this costing the town, right, to attend all of these accidents, which would be so easily avoidable just by having a sensible lower speed limit? So when the, when the chief does the traffic, uh, when they do the traffic analysis and they're looking at the speeds, they really should be looking at this end of the street coming up, coming off of Main Street and to see how fast cars are, are, are coming. Because they barrel around that corner, um, is just unreal.
Thank you. Allison, you're next. Thanks for, uh, hosting the meeting also.
Oh, yeah.
In the chat box, she put in the, uh, Public Safety Meeting for us.
Yeah, um, well, thank you so much for hearing us out and for all the work that's already been done and just the ideas as well. Um, I wanted to just say that, um, the one thing that might help with the volume of traffic is the speed limits. Um, I got to study a little bit of, um, computer mapping in college and the way that the GPS devices work in terms of suggesting routes, different directions. Um, if our speed limits were lower, some of our, some of the traffic that uses Coolidge Street as a cut through would be directed north Main Street to twenty-seven or, I would say on twenty-seven, um, or maybe other places. Um, and I know, um, especially with the speed limit data being included in maps, um, that for some newer cars will alert you when you're going over the speed limit. I don't have a fancy car like that, but, um, I know that that might be helpful, um, with the volume of traffic. If the speed was a bit lower, um, it wouldn't be such a, um, quick route to get places. Um, so that's to do for safety and the volume of traffic. Uh, but yeah, thank you for hearing us out. This is really wonderful.
Yeah, I'm actually chuckling a little bit at what you said because I had friends that moved from Walpole because, uh, uh, Google Maps determined a shortcut to Patriots Stadium through their little tiny neighborhood. So it was only eight times a year, but they could not leave their house on Sundays when there was a home Patriots game in a little tiny neighborhood just because like Google decided that was the quickest way to get to Patriots Stadium. So you're definitely, uh, on target there. All right, I don't see any other hands, any other additional comments. I think we, we do have some good things already, but we also, we have a very strong Public Safety Committee and a, a few people are away. So they, that's why we set up the meeting last week so we could get moving, but there'll be a more robust discussion. I will, I'm, of course, I won't be in town, uh, next Tuesday, but it'll be a very robust group there that, uh, hopefully whoever is available can, can attend. And I'm sure they'll, they'll take minutes.
Just one, uh, more comment?
Go ahead, Paul.
So as I, as I read all these, uh, incidents, what's happened that was horrified and feel that something should be done. And the, the list, I, I don't think is mutually exclusive that we do one and we're done. I think maybe we need to do a variety of things on this list. But we do need to address it. We do need to fix it. Also, on the question of speed, there are ways that we can use this twenty-five mile an hour thing in designated areas. We don't have to designate the whole street, for example, to be twenty-five. But we can certainly before, after, maybe in the S curve, make that twenty-five. And so they're not coming off of like a slingshot and being propelled at high speeds. But their traffic is, is, is dealing with a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. Uh, so there's, there's a variety of, of subtleties with regard to reducing the speed. And I agree with the notion that forty miles an hour is pretty, pretty extreme speed for roads in Sherburne. It's just too high for populated areas. So I'm, I'm home favorite of, uh, taking action and want to see the, the reports and further clarification from.
The police had already recommended a lot of these things and that's why they're gathering the data also too. So they have the quantification to look at, uh, different spots on, on Coolidge. Uh, um, Burton, you have one more. I don't know your first name. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm, I'm Dave.
Dave, okay.
Yep, Dave and Jen.
All right, great.
And we, and we have three children, twelve, eleven and nine.
Good. So, uh, did you have another comment?
Um, there was just one comment, something that I forgot to say, um, which is really just that the, uh, the forty mile an hour speed sign. Um, people see that and they're thinking fifty. Most people see a forty, they're thinking fifty. People who really want to push it, they see a forty, they're thinking fifty-five. It's just too fast. I don't know that you, you could say twenty-five because obviously twenty-five is very low. But I think there would be a huge difference if it went from forty down to thirty and then people came along the street doing actually forty miles an hour and not fifty or fifty plus. I think that's, that's, that's your problem. I mean, it's obviously our, our problem too because we live here, so.
It's, it's everyone's problem. That's why we're, that's why we're discussing it. And then I think that that's what the data will also validate what you're providing anecdotally, Dave. So thank you.
Yeah, I think a speed check right here, what, right where the forty is, right in the hundred yards or so after that sign, you know, maybe before and after it would be, would probably be very interesting for the police. They probably could be writing a lot of tickets. I can't promise you, uh, I can't promise you coffee and donuts sitting in our driveway, but you could sit in our driveway and write a lot of tickets.
You get some revenue for the town too. Uh, okay. Thank you, Dave. Uh, Sean?
Thank you.
Yeah, Jeff, I don't want to get into weeds. I just want to point out one thing about that forty mile an hour zone. We, that's a regulatory speed zone. We have absolutely no authority to change that right now. And in fact, e- even with the, um, the seventeen C adoption, that stretch of Coolidge Street is one of the few places in town that there's not a chance the state's going to lift the regulatory limit because it's not thickly settled. Parts of Coolidge Street are, but that stretch, as you go by Iron Horse Farm, is way beyond thickly settled. It's not even close. So we're not going to be able to ask the state engineers to do that. We might be able to petition them, but that's not going to happen anytime in the next year, I, I wouldn't think. So it's not like the town of Sherburne chose to put that forty mile an hour zone up. It's there. It's been there for decades. Um, probably half a century. And the Select Board has no authority to ask us to not put that, that sign there. It's unfortunate. I agree. That's my father and my, my in-laws' place across the street and I hear the cars accelerating. Um, but it, it's typically not speed that's, that's sending them off the road on a straightaway. They're just not paying attention as they, as they go by Prospect Street. But there's, there's no chance we're going to change that in the, in the very near future. We can try something. And the, the other end of the road is a different story, but, but that forty is, is staying for the near future.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Carol? Uh, you got it. You got to unmute yourself first, Carol.
I have two comments about speed. One is that I don't think the forty mile an hour should start where those houses are. That's thickly settled. It could start at Iron Horse Farm if we had no choice. But it shouldn't start at Main Street. And the other comment about speed is on our end at Spine Street. The limit is actually twenty miles an hour and nobody pays attention to that. Um, and I think if it was, sounds counterintuitive, but if it was twenty-five there and stayed twenty-five through the S curves and then it was enforced, I think it would be much safer.
Okay, uh, thank you. I don't see any other raised hands. I'm double checking the chat. I don't see any other raised hand. So, um, uh, you're finished, right, Carol? Uh, so I, I don't see any further discussion. So um, we did confirm that the, this will be discussed on Tuesday at the police station at 4pm. With Public Safety Committee and they'll uh, you know, this is obviously will be posted usually by tomorrow morning uh, on uh, a YouTube video by Dover Sherwood Cable TV. So people in the neighborhood that uh, couldn't come tonight can watch it if they want to. And um, there'll, there'll be another meeting where they're gonna go over in more detail some of the uh, things we proposed. And I'll probably think of other things in addition to the good suggestions we got tonight. So thank you and uh. Hang in there with us and we're certainly concerned, as concerned as you are and hopefully we can deliver a few things to uh. Change um, drivers' behaviors and uh, make it a safer place to, to, to uh, live. So thank you. All right, so. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Our next meeting is the end of July on the 27th. Um, any motion with respect to consent agenda?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Marion?
I.
Paul?
Hi.
Stephen?
I.
And I am I as well. All right. So we're four to zero on that one. Also, um. Routine business. I don't have any select board report uh, myself. Does anyone um. Have anything that they want to bring up or uh, an issue that? Needs our attention? Go ahead, Marion.
All right. This is just a little report. It occurred to me because uh. One of the problems on Coolidge Street is the aqueduct crosses Coolidge Street. And where that crossing occurs, it is totally impossible for a pedestrian to cross if they want to walk on the aqueduct. And that just uh. I'm not sure that anything we do with speed limits is going to help that because of the sightlines, but. It reminded me that several months ago, uh, actually about a year ago now. I applied to the uh, MWRA. Uh, to get official permission for people to walk on the aqueduct in Sherburne as a recreational resource. And uh, you'd think it was open all the time, but in fact, the town has to ask permission from the uh, M. MWRA. So I put in the application and we finally got the permission to use the aqueduct as a walking route. It's not continuous, but uh, once we get a bypass through the new developments on Coolidge Street. It will be a fairly nice, long walk uh, that will open up Meadow Brook to uh, the playing fields and beyond the playing fields. All the way to the Natick line. So that's just a little bit of information to the town.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Paul or Stephen, did you have anything you wanted to? Report on? All right. Giving you some found time at 7:54. I don't know what, it's actually still light in the select board meeting. That's another, that's another indicator that something's amiss here. So uh, thank you uh, for joining us tonight and uh, Paul's made a motion. Do I have a second on the motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, Marion?
I.
Paul?
Hi.
Stephen?
I.
And I am I as well. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
See you. Good night.